Monday, January 24th, 2022. Welcome to the Beacon City School District School Board Meeting. Please rise for the pledge. Kelly, roll call, please.
Mr. Betterbit?
Here.
Delayed.
Mr. Galloway?
Delayed.
Ms. Johnson?
Excused.
Mr. Steng?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Adler?
Here.
Ms. Tuer?
Here. Matt, could you review the fire exits, please?
Uh, exits are in the back of the LGI.
Thank you. Uh, open to the public. I don't see anyone in the audience here. Um, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a public comment? It doesn't look like there's anyone there either. So we can move on to our workshop. We have two workshops tonight. Are we starting with the budget overview?
Yeah, yes.
So we're gonna begin with budget overview from Matt and Amory.
So, uh, so tonight we have one of our school presentations. We are gonna lead off tonight because, uh, I don't wanna embarrass Brian or brag on his family, but his son is winning a, won an essay contest and the Zoom ceremony is happening right now. So he's, he's in the, in the high school office watching his son receive this award. Uh, so we will go for a little bit. So basically, you all need to ask us questions until you see Brian, you know, walk through the door and we'll be timed appropriately. We wanted to do just a very kinda quick, uh, you know, just where we are with the budget right now and what we're thinking with moving forward. And so Amory was just gonna talk about some of the knowns right now.
Thank you. So, uh, we did receive our state aid runs from the governor's budget, um, and we were pleasantly surprised, as well as other districts, um, that we were receiving, were allocated to receive more money, um, and it will be through foundation aid. So Beacon's state aid run, um, right now is a $650,000 increase from this year to last year, which is always great news. And like I said, it is, it was an increase in foundation aid, which is what the governor had, had really spoken about. The other aid categories are expense-driven aids, so they're based upon prior year expenditures. So we'll see how they kinda fall out, but, you know, we're, we're extremely happy on the foundation aid side. So we'll see what happens as we go forward.
Hold on a sec. Craig, did you have a question on that?
Yeah, I did. Um, I was surprised that it was only about 2.44% for the overall increase of all forms combined. Uh, because when I looked at what other districts were getting, I was seeing much bigger numbers mostly, or at least somewhat bigger numbers. That sort of raises the question about, uh, why? I mean, can you give us any inside baseball there on those expense-driven aids or anything else that may have made us come up only that level when other districts are more?
I think most, most business officials will look to the foundation aid because that is the amount that the governor just gives you based on an, on an aid formula. The expense-driven aids, it's, it's tough to compare us with other districts. It could very well be that we get a higher amount of expense-driven aid and that the increase isn't that much. Whereas if you look at a smaller district or you look at someone that had, um, either a lower or higher, um, numbers. So i- it's hard on a percentage basis, especially when you're, you're just talking. I can look at all the, I can look at the other Duchess County districts just to kinda see and as we go forward, give you a little bit of an idea. Also, their pre-K number is in there, which needs to be backed out. Some people, um, some districts have just started a pre-K program, so they might have gotten some pre-K money next year. Whereas we've had it, we've been, um, thankfully having it, you know, going forward. So I can look a little bit deeper just to give you an idea.
Okay.
But to be honest with you, we haven't seen an increase in foundation aid like that. Normally, when Governor Como gave us the run, the foundation aid was flat, and then we had to kinda wait, um, until the legislative move forward.
Until the legislators gave a little extra. And then the second question would be, uh, what do you think might happen, given that we have a different governor and a different philosophy, which she's been sticking to quite firmly, uh, which I'm pleased to see? What, what do you think might happen as this goes to the legislature? Have you heard any good intel on what's ahead?
I haven't heard anything yet. I think it's kind of early on, you know, um, to see, but we'll, you know, we'll keep an eye on it. I, you know, I, I don't think she's changing the formula, um, this year. That's not my, I don't think that, I mean, that's a big undertaking for her. So I think she's kinda giving it status quo, but I think she's also giving more money to schools, which, you know, again, we're very thankful for, outside of all of the federal money, you know, that we'll be receiving over the next couple of years. So again, since this is just the first time we've kinda talked about it, we'll keep looking at it and trying to keep you guys, um, up to date on what's going forward.
Thank you.
So the other side, this is just a preliminary tax cap calculation, so some of the things we start talking about, yes?
Oh, sorry. We, um, if, just on the previous slide, it's a $650,000 increase over what we have been receiving?
What, what we're, what we've, were anticipated to receive last year. So it was a combination. So they use the aid runs from last ye, from last year.
Okay, okay. Sorry. Sorry, I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay. The preliminary tax cap calculation, so, um, there's still a couple of little variables. The allowable levy growth factor, I believe, will be 2%. It's not formally out there yet, but that's, um, what the talk is. So we always talk about the two things that let us increase the levy. First is the tax-based growth factor. And again, we've been talking about how Beacon has been growing and how that growth factor does, um, add into this calculation. So we did receive the second highest in Duchess County. So with that growth factor, we are able, right off the bat, to increase the levy by $770,000. That's always good news for us because then we could, we have a little bit, um, of play in, in how we move forward. So how I'm saying it is, you know, that, that plus the additional aid will help it be a little bit easier doing, um, the whole budget process. Uh, and the allowable levy growth factor is really tied to the Consumer Price Index. Obviously, you're not surprised that it's 2%. Um, it hasn't been 2% since 19 and 20, but, you know, things are costing more money if it's in, if it's tied to the CPI. It would be, it's been at 2%. They've been tracking it on a monthly basis, so, um, that's what we're thinking. So the preliminary estimate of increase for the tax levy, um, right now will be $1.5 million. And again, that's a, it's an estimate, but we're kind of in that ballpark. I, I'm waiting for a couple of other, you know, just information to be finalized before we go forward. We have until March 1st until we have to file, uh, the tax cap, but we'll know a little bit more. And as the information flows forward, we'll give that information to the board.
So that, so that $1.5 million, does that include the tax-based growth factor?
Yes, that's within calculation. So I did a preliminary tax calculation, um, with the 2%, um, you know, with what our debt is. We have to, you know, um, we get to, we get an exclusion for debt, so it's debt less state aid. So those numbers are still getting finalized for, uh, '22, '23. So I just wanted to give you guys an estimate of how we're, we're gonna move forward. Okay.
And then just, I wanted to take a couple of minutes just to talk about process a little bit. This slide is just a reminder, three years ago, we went through, uh, a really involved and engaged process with stakeholders from all aspects of the community and the district to develop, uh, mission statement, a vision, belief statements for the district, and then the skills and attributes that we wanna see in our graduates. I'm not gonna go through all that tonight. We'll save that for a later presentation, but we're, we're really excited, uh, to be taking this winter and spring to sort of breathe new life into that strategic planning process. We're gonna be working with Duchess BOCES and have someone, um, someone from BOCES to work with us on, on, uh, on breathing life in the strategic plan and making some really actionable and long-range and both short and long-range, um, goals and action steps with that plan. So we're excited to really, um, be getting back into that. When I was looking at some old budget presentations, I was looking at last year's. And last year's, uh, it, it sort of took me back to last year a little bit, and I reflected a little bit. I think maybe a lot of us are, we're sort of reaching like in the next, uh, month or so, the, the two-year, uh, mark of the pandemic. Last year's budget, in, in many ways, was maintaining all the gains that we've made in the budget the last several years. I'm really excited to be looking at this budget in a, in a real growth sort of way, uh, in terms of what can we do to strengthen the district, not just for the '22, '23 school year, but also make some, um, multi-year goals with the budgeting process. So, so we'll be starting in the next few weeks on getting the strategic planning process going again. And we'll also be starting in the next, uh, couple of weeks to getting, um, you know, the budget process, uh, in, in board meetings and lots of meetings with stakeholders. So I wanted to just talk about the budget process for a minute. Like I said, this is a real recovery time and a transition time, um, that we're in. Kind of whether we like it or not, um, you know, things are changing. Beacon City School District has been, uh, open for business every day this school year, minus, uh, a couple of issues with boilers. One at South and today at Sargent, but we've been open every single day, uh, this school year. And, and that's our plan, uh, to do that, knock on wood, moving forward as well. And so with this commitment to staying open, uh, with all that we're going through as a community, I think it, it, all of this just becomes habitual, becomes part of who we are, and it, it helps us, uh, it helps us realize and know what we need, uh, to do to stay open and during, during COVID-19, and also helps us then sort of put that to the side, at least in our thinking process, and really just start thinking about all the things that we really hope and dream and wanna see in the district. So, um, so it's a really exciting time. So in terms of input, uh, from stakeholders, there's a few things that we wanna do. I wanna be, uh, my hope is, um, it doesn't have to be all on Zoom, that I can get back to doing some in-person meetings with some of our school, uh, PTOs and parent groups, um, but we also wanna do a survey, just a really simple survey, uh, that I would put together. We did one again three years ago, and I was looking at that, um, a few days ago as well. And so we wanna do a survey, uh, just in terms of, not just like what do you wanna see in the budget for next year, but what are some long-range things you'd like to see in the budget? And that will go out, uh, to all of our employees. It'll go out to, um, all of our families as well. The, the last group and the most important group that we're gonna be talking with in terms of the budgeting process is students. Uh, so I'll be meeting with, uh, student groups from all of our schools. Uh, so usually how I've done it in the past is I start with fourth grade. I meet with groups of fourth graders and fifth graders from the elementary schools, and I meet with, uh, some groups of, uh, students from Rambout, and then some groups of students from the high school. We don't just talk about the budget, but I do talk about things that they wanna see, um, because they are our focus for the budget process, and it's really interesting to hear, uh, what they have to say. So much of the month of February will be spent, uh, with me in those meetings, gathering that data, both, um, from, from parent groups, um, but also from student groups, and then looking at survey data that we get from everyone. So priorities, our priorities are really based on our board goals. Uh, you're gonna hear a school tonight do another presentation, uh, that's based on the board goals, and so, um, so we're not gonna be really developing new priorities. However, uh, in this budget, I do wanna talk about some things that we do, um, wanna look to strengthen, and, um, there's a few. One is professional development. Again, two years ago, two, three years ago, we had a very robust professional development plan. When the pandemic hit, we stepped away from some of it because a lot of the training was of the more in-person variety. And while a lot of training has moved to Zoom, um, now that things are shifting again with how we deal with the pandemic, our hope is that training's become more in-person again, and we can get back, um, to some of those professional development opportunities that we paused a couple of years ago. So professional development, mental health support for our students. I discussed at the last board meeting, uh, our hope is, is that we can be appointing, uh, a new social worker at the high school at one of the board meetings in February. High school team is working, uh, uh, working on that as we speak. But also looking at other ways our budget can support mental health, uh, for our students. This has been a really tough two years on everyone. It's certainly been, uh, really tough two years on, uh, on our young people. And so we wanna look for ways in the budget that we can support that. We also wanna support, um, opportunity for our students. And when I say opportunity, I mean every aspect of what we do. Academic offerings, not just at the high school, but the whole way through. After-school opportunities for students with clubs and extracurriculars, uh, athletic opportunities. We wanna look for ways to expand, um, our student engagement in things and expand the number of students who, uh, take part in our opportunities. So, so those are some things that, uh, we'll be putting into the budget process. We're working on that right now. And like I said, over the next month, we're gonna be gathering a lot of input from stakeholders. That input, I'm gonna be really clear with the folks, uh, that I gather it from, that we really wanted to help us develop a more long-range plan, um, of budgeting for the district. The other, uh, the other priority is something that we've been talking about for a long time, and, uh, and that's also just to be a competitive district, uh, from a, um, hiring and retaining standpoint, and that's with all of our employees. And so, uh, so that, that is a priority in this budgeting process and for all the years ahead of us, too. I talked about, uh, we're gonna be, um, re-engaging with the strategic planning work. Again, we're doing that through BOCES, uh, so it's a little more cost-efficient to do that, and we're excited to get that work moving. And then lastly, uh, with this budget process, and Amory, I may ask you to come back up to talk about this for a second. We do wanna talk about, uh, creating another capital reserve in this vote. You know, we, we obviously are working on a capital project right now, and, and there'll be work happening this summer, and then work happening in the summer of 2023, but we wanna, uh, we wanna put to the voters, and I think this is something we should be discussing in here and at, uh, the facilities committee meeting, is, uh, is a capital reserve, um, that we, you know, put money towards to deal with things that we cannot cover in, uh, in this capital, um, project. We see the need every day. We saw, even though we're, we're, Sergeant is slated, uh, to get boiler replacements this summer, right? We dealt with, uh, some boiler issues at Sergeant. We had to close the school at the last minute today. We are reopening tomorrow, and we should have a good day tomorrow, Sergeant, but, uh, today was a great reminder of the need to have a capital reserve. And, and so maybe we can just talk briefly about what we're thinking with that.
So we, we will, uh, to, we have a capital reserve now. It was voted on a few years ago for $2 million. And we've used, we put in a million, we used a million, we put in an additional one, and we're using it for this capital project. So the thought process is to put it on the ballot and ask the, um, the voters to create a much larger capital reserve fund than we did before. And the thought process there is to just put money away. So if we have money available, um, we are utilizing the federal rescue money, so that is taking the, we're paying for it out of some of the federal stimulus money instead of what we maybe have budgeted in the general fund. So we may have money available, um, instead of it going just to fund balance, it would be going into a capital reserve. Part of the process for the facility is when we did this capital project, we knew long-term what the planning would be and that we wouldn't be available to have another capital project for, um, many years. So we wanna make sure that if some, if we needed to do something or we wanted to do something, we would have the money available, and it would be paid for out of the reserve, more of a cash project, um, than actually having to borrow money. So that's the thought process. It's obviously, you know, we're working hard on trying to utilize the federal money in a way that could save us some money in the general fund to pay for other things. One of those things would be a capital reserve. So we are gonna include that, um, on the, on the ballot in May, because it needs to be voted on, and then it could be funded as we get money available over multiple years. It doesn't have to just be one year.
And just so the public knows, even though if we set up a capital reserve to still go forth with a capital project, we would have to get voter approval, correct, to spend that money?
That's correct. Mm-hmm. Yes, but we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to float a bond for it. We could tell, uh, the taxpayers that we had the cash available to do it. Yes, Anthony?
So the, the sale of the, the land of the Duchess Stadium, what, what, what fund would that go into?
We're using some of, um, that money for this capital project. So that money is kinda spoken for, for this project. We're using the $1 million of the capital reserve that we had remaining in the old one, and we're also using $600,000 roughly, um, from unappropriated fund balance. But the thought process was that 600 would go back, um, into the, into the fund balance. Now, at the end of the year, you know, if we have a capital reserve and we're able to fund it, you know, we'll talk about how much will stay in fund balance. The Controller's Office recently, and I'll share this with, uh, Audit Finance, but also with the board, they came out with a fiscal stress report, which they send to all the superintendents, and, and one of the things they look at is a district's ability to have reserves and fund balance. So Beacon came out very strong, because we've been maintaining and being able to, to keep up, um, you know, to keep up what we, we needed to have. So there's no big dips in fund balance or reserves, so we kinda wanna keep that process going, um, you know, as we, as we go along.
What's the thought right now for how large this capital reserve should be? Or just an initial thought?
I thought we talked about 2 million. Was that?
No.
No. Yeah, I think a larger, because the, when we were looking at the calendar, we're thinking like, we may have to do a project in between that we would totally fund through that. And so I think 10 was what I had in mind.
Well, I, I guess what, was it 2 million that, that we put aside a certain amount?
Right, so that we would build it up to...
Okay, that's what I was thinking, that, I know that it's a separate fund, but the one thing that confuses me about it is, like you said, what just happened with the boiler. So if it's something that we have to get voter approval to access, then that's, it's not something that we could have on hand to use for outside of general fund. Like it would have to be, the, that fund would be a separate capital fund that then we still put to a vote, and we just accrue it over time, right? It's not something...
There are, there are circumstances, Kristen, where you can actually use the money without voter approval, so over a certain, under a certain dollar amount. Obviously, you still need SED approval. If it's an emergency and you can't go out to the public and you do go to the, you know, to Office of Facilities Planning and State Ed, you can get approval that way. That isn't the way we want to use the money. We wanna use the money for a capital project that the voters are gonna do, approve, but in case we needed it for something, that would be another avenue to use.
And so if it was, it was something where we would put $2 million aside from our budget every year for five years, then we'd get to that mark and we'd have a project that we would put forward? That's what it would...
Or we could use la, like, if we had $10 million and we didn't need to use $10 million and you only wanted to do a project for two, you can just take two out and then you relieve the eight there. So it gives you a little flexibility.
So just so everyone understands the process, the voters would vote to approve, uh, say, a $10 million capital reserve?
Correct.
We could put money in there without voter approval as we see the funds available at the end of each year?
Correct.
However, once we put the funds in the capital reserve, if we wanna use the funds, we have to go for a, a capital, a, a vote for the public to do a capital project, but if we wouldn't be going for a bond, we would be paying for ourselves? Okay.
Yes.
How long does the capital reserve last? Like...
I want, 10 years?
10 years?
I, I'm not sure that we have actually formally set a target. I think that's a good subject for discussion and how that might look on a schedule over a period of time.
So I, I mean, the, the nice part of going for a higher amount is if you have, um, more money. Or if we don't have the money in one year, you don't have to fund it, but you can fund it. Or if you have more than, you know, year one, maybe nothing, but year two, you have more, you know, it kinda gives you flexibility to kinda plan for the future.
And I think some of the conversation that happened at facilities is because this next capital project is gonna take us out where we have, we don't have a tax increase and it's staying level.
Level, yeah.
Right? But that's gonna take us out so many years that we don't have a dip. So setting up a capital reserve will allow us to do that capital maintenance instead of the project, right? It's maintenance of our buildings and equipment and stuff if we need it.
Right. Yeah, the, the whole concept is that there's certain bonded indebtedness that falls off on a natural schedule when you pay the last installment, and that's a good time to start a new program. So those openings occur not on a regular basis, but based upon when the bonds are finished.
Right.
So, uh, this is kind of a longer stretch we're looking at, and as Anthony said, uh, it might be good to have something in between times. You know, and that, that's basically what this is intended to create.
So what happens at... Sorry.
Go ahead.
So what happens at the end of the 10 years?
We'd have to go back into the, um, into the fund balance or the general fund?
I do believe too, Anthony, that if we, you could get an extension if you have a plan as to when you're gonna use it, they can extend it. So let's say that our facilities, uh, committee is working on a capital project that's 12 years out, right? If we have a plan that we're gonna set forth, then it's okay, and they could get an extension for that piece, where you don't have to put it back into the...
Cause vote, cause pending voter approval, I mean, it may take a couple of votes, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the public if they wanna vote on the capital project.
So if you're at your 10-year mark and you get an extension, how long does the extension come last?
I think it varies.
Yeah. Okay.
On SED, right? I mean, it's gonna vary on the state approval.
So the voter, the voters can't say like, alright, well, it's been 10 years, you're gonna renew another 10 years, or it's a different capital fund then?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, um, I didn't put a timeline on the slide, but when would we need to kinda lock, lock in on, um, what we wanted to put on the ballot? Like, by when would we wanna be...
The amount for the...
Yeah.
By, um, March or April, the latest.
We could, we should definitely...
What has to go forward on the ballot?
Put on the agenda for the next audit and finance?
Yeah.
I mean, I know this was something I brought up last year before the, the budget and, and the vote. It's just that we didn't have enough public conversation about it, uh, prior to, and so when we, that's, I just wanna make sure. I think it's a great way to save, because we're not gonna have that debt falling off, to, to maintain our buildings without increasing the tax levy.
It makes a lot of sense to me. Is it an audit committee or is it a facilities committee?
Probably both.
Yeah, it's not the first time we've talked about this. I thought...
No, it's not the first time. I mean, I think, and I, I think there's general consensus about doing it, but maybe we need, do we need Bernard Donegan to weigh in on, on how much or how large the reserve is?
I think that, well, I, I don't, that would pretty much be up to the board as to the total dollar amount. Bernie Donegan wouldn't be able to, we, we'd have to get closer to the year-end, so I could probably give you an estimate of fund balance, and it would be on a year-to-year basis of what's available.
Just about how much, yeah. I mean, I think that...
We did do this. We, we had, and they did participate in a conversation about it, and I think part of why it didn't get moved forward is because I think last year there were too many unknowns. So you couldn't really do a run where we could talk about it in any way of knowing what we were gonna have on hand.
We also had Duchess Stadium on the ballot as well.
Right, I think we felt it would be a confusing ballot, and we didn't know if it was gonna be all absentee or how the voting was gonna go.
Yeah.
But I think that, um, I mean, the committee members happen to be the same for the Audit and Finance Committee and Facilities Committee. So I, I do think at the next meeting, it'd be good to just sort of look over, you know, our history of capital projects and when we think we might wanna do, need to do another small, like, maintenance project and plan around that, and maybe we can make some decisions based on that. And we have that calendar...
From two different angles. One, for facilities, I think we talk about really having a, that Buildings and Conditions Survey be more of a living document where we have ongoing priorities year to year and have our eye on where something could be potentially an unexpected expense that we might wanna be prepared for. And the other is to think about how we manage our budget so that we can have money that we put into reserves, and that would be Audit and Finance.
Is there, is there a downside to saying that, that we, that, that, you know, on the ballot, we'll ask for a 10 million limit, but then through the committees decide that, you know, we really just need eight, we'll just fund it up to eight and just continue using that fund?
I can tell you, based on the Buildings and Conditions Survey, like...
We're gonna need more than 10.
We're never gonna run out of things to spend.
Oh, it's, it's so long.
Okay. So...
True.
Right, but also we're not obligated to get it up to 10. We're limiting it to 10.
Yeah.
If we have a bad, if we have a year where, like, let's say the federal money falls off and we're in a different position in a few years, then we don't have, we don't have to set aside 2 million, but it can just be a goal that we have, that we revisit every year when we go through the budgeting process.
Is there...
Able to put aside.
I see. Is, is 10, is 10 some sort of regulatory limit, or is just...
I see. Is, is 10, is 10 some sort of regulatory limit or is it just a number we just pick?
No, I think we just looked at the average of what our projects had been.
Okay.
And what, and the idea of what a small, a small to mid-size project would be that, because what we're doing with this project is it is much bigger, but it is tax neutral than the prior one. And I think the prior one was eight.
Eight.
And so we were just trying to think of, since we have now, like Anthony said, we've spent, our debt has come off, but we've spent far out, you know? So we're, it's not going to come back down again so that we can access those funds. And a lot can happen in the interim, and we want to make sure that our general fund is insulated from, so that we can plan on education spending and programming and everything else. And then our facilities have this kind of captive money that we can access for keeping the buildings, buildings up to date, like Anthony said. Because there, that, that laundry list is long. And our buildings are older. A lot of New York City buildings are older.
There's always something.
Yeah.
I, I kind of feel that we have enough to put it on the agenda for next meeting. I'm kind of missing what else needs to be done.
Well, do we have another, I mean, I guess I would like to run it by those committees before we talk about it as a whole board.
Okay.
On the meeting, just so that we can look back at that history a little bit more closely. And, and so our next facilities and Audit and Finance is on the 17th. So does that give us time? If we discussed it at the February 21st meeting, that would be fine for the schedule of getting it on the ballot, it sounds like.
I mean, we're going to have a bus proposition probably again. We're probably going to have other things on the ballot. But if you feel that's, if you feel that's the better path, I'll support it. I just...
What other things does it have to do with the bus? We always have the bus and the budget candidates.
Yeah. I don't know.
Are you, I'm, I'm confused as to what your...
Oh, no, I, I, I didn't, I kind of, no, you're right. I mean, there's, there isn't a lot, a lot. I mean, but...
Last year, we didn't, we really talked about doing it last year.
Yeah, we did.
We really discussed it, but it was this, we didn't know if we were going to pay for ballots. We didn't know, you know, we had the, the Duchess Stadium, and that even proved to be true that it was, it turned out to be confusing right at the end. So we did need to spend a good bit of time on that. And I think if we put those two things together, that would have been very complicated, but since we're not selling the land under a stadium this year, and hopefully won't have to ever do that in the future, I think it, this could be a more of like a, this will be a normal, sort of easier sell, especially because we're going to be starting the capital work this summer anyway.
Okay. Do you think it's best? I'm ready to support it already.
You are already?
Yeah.
Well, but there's no, we've got the time. It's not like...
Okay.
We, we just wanted to put it out there tonight, just kind of like we haven't forgotten about it. We also think it's really important. And, you know, today was another reminder of why it's important with, you know, the boiler issue at Sargent. So, so again, like, all of this is very future-focused, building, planning. We're, we're really excited to get this process rolling.
Great. Are there any other questions for Matt or Anne Marie? Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up, we have a report from Rambout Middle School. Brian, congratulations to your son.
Good evening, everybody. Hello. Thank you for having me tonight. I'd like to thank my assistant principals for both coming. They're a huge help all year long and also a huge help with putting this together. So it wouldn't be possible without their hard work, a lot of the things we do at the school. When we're highlighting, I'm also going to highlight some of the things that we did over the summer, just because I feel like that was an important transition into this school year. So everything may not be exactly from this school year, but also from the summer, because I feel like we didn't get a chance to highlight some of those things leading into this year. So in terms of excellence, we've been using iReady across ELA and math for all three grade levels this year. We have just gotten done completing our second benchmark in math. So we've done the first benchmark in both subjects, the second benchmark in both subjects. And our data team will be meeting, I believe, next week to begin to look at the progress that we've made from the first benchmark to the second benchmark. We also have trainings lined up through the district for teachers and for administration to interpret those results and keep an eye on how students are progressing. That is going to be something that we're using to decide whether students should be in AIS or they should come out of AIS. So those numbers are going to be looked at by our data team and those will also be looked at by our guidance counselors. In terms of language offerings, this is our first year with Italian, so we're really excited this year. We have Italian VII at Rambout. We have two sections of it. It's going well. The high school was kind enough to let us borrow some staff so we could run Italian. We are hopeful next year to run a section of Italian VII and introduce Italian VIII to the middle school. And once we have that done, then we'll have Italian VII, Italian VIII, and then they'll transition up to the high school to complete the program. So that does give us that second language at the middle school, and it gives students an option. So far, everything's going well with it, and we are, by all means, it's been a positive experience for everybody that's in it. New this year, we are transitioning to computer-based testing. It's been a while, but it's time for us to, to get into that system. So for state testing, it will be computer-based at the middle school for both math and ELA. In order to do computer-based testing, you had to run a simulation. So we ran actually two simulations last week at Rambout Middle School. We were originally going to do one. So we started by doing just our seventh-grade math students in a simulation. And the purpose of the simulation isn't really for the students. It's really to test the capability of the school, the Chromebooks, how we would handle everything to make sure we're prepared. So for the students, it was really just them participating. It's non-graded. Nothing goes anywhere. It is 100% for the district and the building to make sure we're ready for computer-based testing. At the conclusion of our seventh-grade math, we decided that we wanted to expose all of our teachers to what it would be like to proctor for computer-based testing. So we then opted to do an additional simulation, and we did that with the entire school. And we did that in ELA, and that was done on the Friday. And it was seamless. We had no issues. We had no Chromebook issues, no issues with connectivity. So everything went well. We feel that as a district, as a building, we're well-prepared to administer computer-based testing this spring. Part of going to computer-based testing, the district purchased EdVista Data Mate Elite for us. That is now available to all of our teachers and students. That's basically a test-generated system. And they have all the tools that the students would use on the state assessment for computer-based. Obviously, when you change to computer-based testing, especially in math, there's a, a whole set of toolbars that they need to be able, the students need to be able to use and function with in order to input their answers. And so we now have that for the students and teachers to practice with from now until the testing time. Actually, you know, our license goes past that, but the goal is to get the students familiar with that. It also gives the teachers the ability to have another test-generating system and get any state test question that's been delivered over the last several years. So it really gives them a wonderful bank of questions, and it gives students the ability to get used to all the tools, which we're excited about. We have eight students participating in PNW BOSI's. It's a young author's middle-level colloquium. So we're going to be sending eight students to that. We're very excited about that. It's a great opportunity. We haven't participated in that before, so this will be our first year doing that. Our math department, all three grade levels are now using eMath instruction. What's important about that is that is also what's being utilized at the high school. So by having the middle school and the high school both on the eMath instruction, we're hoping that that's going to help limit gaps in terms of instructional gaps as they go from grade to grade and transition from Rambout to the high school. In terms of changes to AIS, in AIS literacy, we are doing that a little bit differently this year. So last year, we had an AIS literacy teacher. The only thing that teacher did was AIS literacy. We have switched it to use the model that we use in our math classes, which is we have an additional ELA teacher this year, and then each ELA teacher has a period of AIS literacy. And our goal is to try to give them their own students back in that AIS period so that the teacher who has the student during regular instruction, if the student needs that additional support, is getting them back for AIS literacy to work with them. And also in our AIS programs, we are using the iReady system to help close any learning gaps. We continued our staggered hall changes this year, which means if you come to the middle school, a hall change takes 12 minutes, which is a very long hall change, but it also cuts down on a lot of behaviors that you have. So in terms of our staggered hall change, we've found that it has really lowered the number of instances or issues we've had in the hallways, because we've only got one grade level out at a time. So it is a huge decrease in the amount of students in the hallway. So you're talking about 220 students about, on a hall change for four minutes, and it keeps rotating. It is tougher for us to supervise in the sense that it's 12 minutes long, but it's much easier in the sense that you have a great visibility in the hallway. You know who belongs out there, and the students tend to get to class much quicker, especially our sixth graders. For our sixth graders, it's a wonderful thing, because they're all throughout the building now. That gives them four minutes with no other students in the hallway to get to class.
And Brian, that's something you, it's Meredith's.
Oh, sorry, Meredith. Go ahead.
Is that something you started because of COVID?
We did start that because of COVID. So that was a change that we initiated last year when we were creating the, the new schedule. We liked the way it worked, but obviously we only had a limited look at it at the end of last year, because even at the end of last year, we still weren't really fully involved. You know, it's got pluses and minuses. But I will tell you, in terms of the pluses, we find that we're way down in, like, altercations and things like that in the hallway, because the opportunity just isn't there. So the number of students that are out and about on a hall change is just way down. And if you're there on a hall change, it's not like, you know, when you, when you let the whole school out at once, it is like Grand Central, you know, shoulder to shoulder. You can't get anywhere, one grade out at a time. While it has some challenges, like if a teacher has a seventh-grade class and then the following class is sixth grade or eighth grade, there's a little bit of lag time once in a while. But at the middle school level, so far, I have been a fan of the staggered hall change. And I think it's done wonders in terms of how our students are getting from class to class and how we're able to keep an eye on them from class to class.
So it's something you think you would try to continue?
Well, most likely yes, and minimally a version of it. Because of COVID last year, we rearranged the building and we made everything by content area. So there's a math wing, there's an ELA wing. In doing so, we, we put the sixth graders all throughout the building. So if we decided not to stagger the same way, we would probably minimally stagger sixth grade, and then seven and eight would rotate together. But as it stands right now, every day, I kind of check on teachers. How do you think? How do you like it? And, you know, we're probably about 50/50. Some of them love it. Some of them, it's a challenge for only because there's more students in the hallway at different times. If they teach different grade levels, that's a little bit of a challenge. But at the middle school level, that's a much more isolated challenge to deal with. So if you had to ask me right now, my gut feeling would be that we're going to stay with it, at least for the time being. And I think it's, it's working well. If you asked me if we put them all back out in the hallway, I'd probably, I'd probably get nervous with the number of kids that were in the hallway.
There had been some concerns I had seen raised by sixth-grade parents about the, the amount of time that it gave sixth-grade students to get to their lockers. I'm, I'm wondering if that just, you know, through the year, they got more used to it? Or if it's something that when, hopefully, things return to a bit more normal, the content areas being shifted back to grade wings would, would alleviate that issue?
So what, for the most part, some of those concerns were earlier in the year, and a lot of that has to do with them getting used to the building, getting used to the routine, getting used to where their locker is, when should they go to their locker, and taking advantage of those things. And that's all part of changing that elementary model and getting into the, the middle school model. I think now, most of them have their schedule kind of down, when they should go to the locker, when they shouldn't. You know, for a lot of them, they're learning to open the locker still at the beginning of the year. So some of them avoid the locker at all costs at the start of the year. And so at this point, it works out much better. We may make adjustments to where we locate their lockers. So when the sixth graders were all in their own hallway, their lockers were all right by that, and most of their core classes were there. So it was easy to go to your locker, because your locker was typically by four of your classes. The fact that we now have the classes all spread out through the, out the building means their locker is probably not going to be next to their four main classes. And what we typically do, and what we did this year, is usually we put your locker near your first-period class. In retrospect, that's probably not the best location for it, because it probably makes more sense to put it somewhere where you're at a little bit later in the day. Because in the morning, you've got more time to get to your locker. So we're going to look at, if we keep the building the way it is, where should we locate lockers for students? I mean, we cannot, everybody's not going to have a locker in the middle of the building just because it's impossible. So they're all going to have challenging, you know, distances to get to the locker. But I think if we put it more towards like a third-period class or something like that, it may be more beneficial to students, because they really don't need to go to their locker before third or fourth period.
Right.
If they're prepping the morning properly at their locker, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I had assumed that they're kind of settling in, but I, I knew the building had also taken...
They're, they're like professionals now. They're, they're, they're all over the place now. The other thing that obviously came about with COVID is the split lunches. So half the grade level starts with recess, the other half of the grade level starts with lunch. It makes the cafeteria a lot less crowded. But it is, that, it could be a challenge also, because we've got a lot of moving pieces. So on a day where we're not going outside at all for recess, we are trying to switch 115 kids from classrooms to the lunchroom, while also moving the kids from the lunchroom to the classrooms and cleaning the tables in between. So those days are a lot of hands on deck. The teachers have been great. The studio staff has been great, just in terms of getting things cleaned up and getting students move where they need to be. But the split lunches is another thing that helps prevent, you know, tension and issues with students. So if we have two students that may be not getting along at a grade level, it's a very easy thing for one of them to have the first half of lunch and the other one has the second half of lunch. And it really gives them that space where if they're going through conflict, they're not seeing that person constantly. And so the lunchroom has honestly been a very nice place to be. Like, there's a lot less drama in it, because the students have the ability to kind of separate themselves through the guidance office, through administration. You know, we don't send one person to the other side with nobody there. We try to put them with a group. And if a group of kids is not getting along, we tend to try to split them so that some are in one half, some are in the other half. And then usually, within a couple of weeks, they want to get back together anyway, and we switch them back. The only thing we got, we were careful with, with our numbers, is how many we have on one side. We can't lop-side it so much that the lunchroom is packed for one half and empty on the other half.
I have a question about the...
Sure.
So the staggered hall change is very, very, sounds like very good news, and unintended benefits, right, you realize?
Absolutely. I would agree with that.
So, and I know how tight the, the hallways are at Rambout.
Yeah.
Are we, is it, is it, is it now less tight enough to bring back the, I don't know if you, I mean, I'm probably dating myself, but I, but like, before you couldn't have a backpack.
We allow backpacks now from class to class. Yep. Yeah, so to your, exactly to your point, with, with that space in the hallway, the backpacks are a non-issue in the hallway. If anything, they overpack the backpacks, which is the problem. You know, they're, they're carrying around these huge backpacks, because they don't use their lockers. So it's, you know, but we do allow them to carry backpacks from class to class. Just in terms of equity, some of the things that we've done, it finally felt normal again this year, but we had an assembly here at the high school. We walked everybody up. We had Mikey Fallon come. I don't know if anybody in here has gotten to see Mikey Fallon. He's a tremendous speaker. He really hits home with the students. They, they loved it. We had a parent evening that night, and, you know, it wasn't a huge crowd at it, but the people who were there... but the people who were there were just in awe of him, the way he speaks, the topics that he brings up. He, he challenges students with a lot of sensitive topics in a very dynamic way that allows them to reflect and think about things. And if I, he's the best speaker I've ever brought in. So I try to bring him in every three years so that every student at Ram Bell gets the opportunity to hear him speak and hear his message. But he was great. We did that earlier this year. We have Student of the Month. We, we consider it to be a non-academic based Student of the Month. That's where we partner with the Elks Club. They kind of acknowledge our students, which is really a wonderful thing that they do for us and give an award out. But that Student of the Month isn't supposed to be our top academic student. That Student of the Month is, is based on criteria where we're recognizing kids who are putting in a greater effort or who are working harder. And that doesn't mean they have to pass every class they're taking. That might mean they're making a difference in one person's class and really putting that effort forth. Our teachers fill out a form and then we pick a Student of the Month. It's, it's really great. We have a girl right now. She wants to know if she can have her picture and her thing when it's all done. And I said, absolutely, you can have it. So Mrs. Edelman with the Elks Club really doing a nice job honoring those students and making it special. We used to do it as part of our honor roll ceremonies. Now the Elks Club just comes and they go outside by the kiosk and they do a nice little ceremony with just the students, just to recognize them and honor them and take their pictures. We did, the principal led, I, I should know this because I did them, but we did code of conduct meetings. So I did individual phys ed class code of conduct meetings. It took me six straight days, but I met with every single phys ed class individually by grade level to discuss the code of conduct, to talk about things. And by the end of six days, you're, you're really, really exhausted from all the meetings. But the number of questions you get to answer in a smaller setting with the students is really important. So they have the opportunity to hear me. I have the opportunity to hear them. They have the chance to tell me if they want me to look at things or change things. But it's just a really nice way to start the school year off and a really nice way for them in a small setting to be able to interact as opposed to bringing 200 kids into the cafeteria and me talking at, at the microphone about the code of conduct and the handbook. So those meetings really, really do go well. And the students, their feedback is they like it a lot better than the other ones because we get a lot of questions from students that didn't raise their hands before. And sometimes it's just simple things that they're asking.
Do you have a way of capturing the, the questions that come up?
I'm sorry. Ca- oh, you mean capturing them?
Because, you know, the code of conduct was something that was a kind of long project to work on from the board and policy level. And so that, having that feedback mechanism to hear what is working or not working or what they understand or don't understand or what's maybe missing would be really helpful. And if you're having these kind of close up meetings, that would be really useful information to have.
What we'll do is next year, if we get things, we'll write them down. This year I didn't write anything down. We usually just discuss it. But a lot, they were very happy because we had changed a few things kind of leading into the year. So the fact that we had changed, and it, it's on here, but adjusted what our hat policy was in the building was a big moment of happiness for many of them. So they were really, we, we at Ram Bell Middle School have gone more towards the high school model and we're allowing hats, we're allowing headgear. We're not allowing hoods because when they're wearing the hood combined with the mask, we really can't see their ears or much of their facial, facial features at all, at all. But almost anything else they want to wear on their head, as long as it's not distracting or disruptive to the educational process, we're allowing. And we think that that is something that for a while, we've been, we're asking kids to take hats off and a lot of times they're wearing them for a reason. And we were enforcing a rule just to enforce a rule, not necessarily because we agree with it. Because most of the time when they would come to us and say, listen, I'm having a bad hair day, I got it. We're just saying, okay, let's give them a pass. Like they're, they're more comfortable wearing their hat. And I think we have to get out of that concept of wearing a hat is disrespectful because they're not wearing a hat to disrespect anybody. And so the kids have been really, really happy with that change at the middle school. And so I think at the code of conduct meetings, that was like a, a really high point. So they're pretty happy with most things. We also gave them the ability to use electronics during lunch, which is not something we typically did at the middle school. But we're trying to be understanding that the times are changing. Everybody has one and we shouldn't treat every kid like they're using it incorrectly. So we just asked that they don't video, they don't take pictures and they're not on social medias. But if they want to listen to music during lunch, if they want to do something on their phone, you know, they can do it with the Chromebook. So to not let them use the phone didn't make a lot of sense to us. And we felt like giving them that also gave them another area where they had additional things that they were allowed to do at the middle school. And so far we've had very little issues with them not being respectful in the cafeteria at recess with their electronic devices.
So I want, I want to second Kristen's comment. That's a very good, that's a very good comment. You know, we, we, we do want that feedback loop back to the policy committee to, to adjust the code of conduct. You know, the dress code, even the teaching materials, you know, we have a textbook reference in the policy somewhere, you know. Those type of things I think would, would help keep the policies relevant, keep the policies up to date and also kind of make sure there's, you know, that there is the appropriate rules to, to do good. So.
Well, maybe what we could do this year, because when we do that one at the beginning of the year, we are trying to cover a, a lot of, you know, of the boring, the boring things in the, in the handbook that most students are just like, hey, okay. It might be a good idea for us at the end of the year to have another meeting where we get input on them leading into the year. And that would be something that we're just brainstorming with them, things that they liked from the year, things that maybe they didn't like, things that they'd be looking for us to change. And we might be able to get you a lot of feedback from that. And it also might be easier for us to facilitate that conversation at that point in time because the one at the beginning of the year, I'm trying to get through like 25 items. So while we do answer questions, I also want to make sure that I'm hitting all the important things that are just, that they need to know prior to the start of the year. But we'll certainly do something to get you the feedback.
We also, you know, I mentioned I'll be doing student focus groups. That could be part of what we ask. And I just want to jump in and say I've, I've managed to sort of randomly pop in on Brian doing these talks for now a few years with, at the beginning of the year with these small groups of kids. And it's just a really comfortable environment. Brian does a great job with the kids. Like they, they really open up and ask a wide ranging questions. I, I've heard like a lot of different questions in these meetings. So I think it's a really great way to kind of acclimate kids to the middle school.
Absolutely. So just moving along, obviously this month we're doing the passive live streaming to try to help out people that are at home. And so the teachers have been great with that. The, the culturally responsive teaching materials, that's been a focus. I will tell you that the best training that my staff has had or that I've seen actually got done through our district. Saggy during the PD day at the beginning of the year, she came to Ram Bell just like she went to the high school. But she did a training for our staff and it was, it was well done. It was excellent and I think our staff would love to have more of the training that she did. Like she really did a nice job. So hats off to the training that she, she did for the district. I don't know that anybody here was able to see it, but I was very impressed. I've been to a lot of different trainings. She did a nice job. So I thank her for that. Next up, the virtual parent meetings. While I don't, I think all of us like the in-person parent meetings, the virtual parent meetings also give that opportunity to people that it isn't so easy to get into the school. And I think that's another change that has to stay. While we do want to have in-person meetings, I think we always have to keep this virtual option open because it allows the parent that has a tough time getting to us to still be able to connect with us and meet with us. So that is something that I think is important in this community and I think has to stay from here on out. Fifth grade orientation, I don't know how we're going to do it this year, but last year's leading into sixth grade this year was the best we've ever had. That was because of COVID. So we had Wednesdays where the students were all home. So we brought each elementary in on a Wednesday. They had a, a, a half day at the middle school with our teachers from sixth grade, running orientation groups, doing activities, eating lunch. They left here knowing the building, knowing teachers and really enjoying it. And I don't know how I'm going to pull that off this year, but we're going to try to think of something outside of the box to make it look somewhat like last year because it was hands down the best fifth grade orientations we've ever done. Our kaleidoscope club grows, I think by the week. Mrs. Suma is doing an outstanding job with them. They're always posting different things in the building. So that club has really taken off and done a nice job. We talked about the dress code already. The summer academy in terms of equity, Mrs. Beordy and Mrs. Edelman ran the summer academy. So I'm not taking any credit for it. They did a lot of work. They did an outstanding job. But we, we ran a program that had three days of math, science, I'm sorry, math, English and science at some levels and at other levels foreign language. And on the Thursday, they got to go on a field trip every Thursday for four weeks. And we took kids to the Bronx Zoo, Citi Field to a baseball game, the Gravity Vault and the Castle in Chester. I didn't, I didn't make, mess, mess that up, did I? No. And so regardless of what some of those kids did the rest of their summer, we know that they got to go out to places four different times. I actually saw a kid this weekend and he told me he'd never been to a baseball game before the summer academy last year and that it was awesome. And so those are the stories you hear and you realize just how important the trips and making those things available for all of our students are. And, and that summer academy, I'm hoping we can duplicate it again this year. It was really a nice experience for kids over the summer, especially coming out of such a tense school year with COVID. We are also working on new clubs. We are possibly experimenting with the idea of a gaming club. And the other club that we are looking to possibly start is an anime club. We have a number of students that are interested in that and a staff member that's willing to take it on. And so those are some of the new clubs that we're trying to propose to see. The more clubs we offer, the more students that are involved with different interests and that's the goal. Have something for every kid that they want to stay after for.
So the, so the environmental club didn't win at all?
Oh, no, 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 no. We're going to get the environmental club. Don't worry. They're, they're on here. But I don't want to ruin it before we get to it. There's, the environmental clubs, these are new clubs that we, we want to form. We already, we have the environmental club.
Can you tell us a, of just a, a couple of sentences about the kaleidoscope club? What's the objective of that club?
So the, the objective of that club is just to have a, a place in the building where students can go and feel free from judgment and be open to be able to talk and have conversations. And then they'll also do activities and put positive things up around the building. So Mrs. Suma, it's really like a, a building support and understanding for one another. And it gives them a safe place to go, be together, listen to each other, talk about things and also put positive messages up around the building and create things for our building. So that, that club is kind of taking shape, but Mrs. Suma is the one that runs that. And she is getting a lot of students that are interested in it. So it's great. When you get a club that a lot of students want to go to, something's going on right. But she's doing a nice job with that. In terms of communication, Mrs. Beordy runs the Monday message. She wouldn't let us run it while she was out on leave. She continued to run it. Not sure why she doesn't trust me to run it. But we get 2,000 plus views in a two week period on the Monday message. So if you ever want something to get seen, send it to Mrs. Beordy for the Monday message. It is, it's way up there in views.
I see the word analytics on the slide.
In terms of Blackboard Connect, that's one of the things that we did target. So obviously sending out messages through Blackboard is, is huge for us. And when we were doing some of our strategic planning, that was something that we wanted to target in terms of making sure that people are getting those messages. So we found out who was not on Blackboard and they, our guidance office was reaching out to those people to get them connected and get them signed up. So they're not missing the messages we send out. So that was something that got done just to update numbers and emails so that when we send information out, we know it goes to everybody. Instagram and Twitter are still up and running and we now have a brand new AM morning news shows, news show at Ram Bell. And that gets put on our website every day. So it's available for parents as well. The kids have loved it. It started in January. So it's in its early stages, but it's got some really nice backdrops where the kids talk sports and different activities. And we will be adjusting our schedule a little bit next year just to make sure there's time in the day because sometimes all, everybody wants to put things on it now. So sometimes it's like six, seven minutes long. So we've got to kind of create a little space in our day where students get to watch that. And then we have instructional videos, parent trainings and the pick a time conferences, which I think have really helped a lot. I, I don't ever want to go away from pick a time. It puts all parents in an, in an equal playing field to be able to set up appointments and meet with teachers. So it's been great. Culture of care, we have teacher lesson of the month and the students really, really get a kick out of that and they nominate their teachers. Like when you hear from students what they like and what, you know, they, they go to bat for their teachers. And it's really cool to hear what they have to say about the teachers and the lessons. And it, it's motivating to the teachers because the teachers all know, you know, who got teacher of the month and what was their lesson. And I think a lot of them, you know, are challenging themselves to get to that with their students. The students of the month, we talked about, we have that through the Elks, but we also do phys ed students of the month and they give away the shirts that you can see in the one picture, which are the Beacon double XL phys ed shirts, not that they're all double XLs, but. We did virtual honor roll assembly because unfortunately we can't pack everybody back into the cafeteria yet. Lunch and recess options, we've talked about a little bit. But if you have been around, well, you can see a picture on the bottom left of the screen. That's what our, we call our outside cafe looks like. So the district has done a wonderful job in buying us stuff. We've got better seating than we have in this picture. It's a little outdated. But now we have about 25 picnic tables. And when the weather is good, we'll have most of the cafeteria eating outside. Like until the bees came, they really, really loved it. We actually have some kids eat outside every day. So that is something that's here to stay regardless of what the situation is. It's something we should have been doing for kids a long time ago. They like it. It's, it's, it's great. And we're going to continue to do it no matter what the school situation is. We also give them recess options. We try to encourage them to be outside, but we do have the library available for indoor recess and we also keep some classrooms open for indoor recess during the colder weather. For, back to normalcy, we had a book fair this year. It was the best book fair we've ever had. We sold everything. So sales were through the roof. And I think that's because students have been longing for that sense of being able to do things they didn't get to do. It was jam packed like Barnes and Noble every single day. So our librarian was like exhausted, but she set a record every single day at the book fair. And we have our teachers focusing on student engagement. We just want them constantly try to engage the students where they're at and make things more exciting and interesting for them. I'm not sure who's wearing the penguin suit. I can't give it away. But we did a staff appreciation with ice cream last year. That's where that's from.
Oh, it's a video.
Do you have clothes that are old and don't fit? Do you breathe air? There's a bin outside of Ram Bell Middle School.
Donate your clothes and shoes to these bins. For every full bin used again will plant a tree.
If you get 80% of closeted clothes and shoes are worn again.
Your hand clothes are more affordable.
Worn by 70% of people.
My closet pulled out a whole garden path full of clothes.
Donate today!
So there's a, a little excerpt from our environmental club. They put that on our morning news show. So we thought we'd share that with you. In April of 2021, we took fourth place. Mrs. Beordy and the environmental club really spearheaded this effort in the nation, right? We took fourth place with the bins that we had outside of Ram Bell Middle School and won a $650 prize for collecting 6,800 pounds of textiles. We also have a partner. So this is our third year of the environmental club and it's not going anywhere. We like it. We are in partnership with Common Ground Farms still. We now have our vegetable garden in the courtyard. Our home and careers class is doing composting out there as well. We've been doing pop-up farmers markets when we have items available. So near the end of last year, we were giving away lettuce and different things from the inside garden. You have our drop-off bin. And we have also been trying to encourage students to be using reusable water bottles. I will tell you that that is a daily thing because they like lots of cups, but we're trying to get them to bring water bottles. So that is all we have for right now. Probably went a little longer than I was supposed to. I don't know. I didn't see anything flashing, but. Does anybody have any other questions? Anything we didn't cover that you'd like to know about?
How are your STEM offerings?
So we, we still have our technology class in six, seven, and eight. And that's one of the things that we're looking to do. And we've been doing is we're, we're working on a Makerspace for them to use. So Mike Keely and the tech department have kind of been, over the last year and a half, two years, kind of stockpiling different things. And so the room is getting closer and closer to being like a really nice area with robotics things, 3D printers, different computers, circuits, the little programmable, their little cars. What are they called? There's like bots and cars. So what we're trying to do is also get some bins with different supplies for students to make. But that's all part of what we're looking to engage with our STEM students. We are also, usually we have the engineers come in. They weren't doing it this year right away, but they're looking to possibly do it a little bit later in the year. So we're going to welcome them to come and do their projects with our classes if they're willing to come a little bit later in the school year.
Would, would that be exclusively with the technology classes? Or what's the Makerspace for?
No. Well, right now, we're not, we don't have somebody to staff it. Ideally, you would staff it with like, like a, a person. And then it's open. I don't want to, I don't want to say what the person would be, but a variety of different positions that are possible. But if that was something that was staffed, then it would be something that you could always send kids to. Otherwise, it's, the way we envision it now is it wouldn't just be for our tech classes. Like, any teacher could eventually sign up to use the Makerspace. And if they're signed up, they'd go. And then they're, they're responsible for overseeing the kids and making sure that all the materials that are in there are used properly and taken care of. So we actually were converting one of our computer labs because computer labs are kind of obsolete now. So we converted our computer lab by the library. It is a combination Makerspace and Mrs. Beordy's AM morning news studio. So that's currently what's happening in there.
I, I had a question about the computer-based testing.
Yes.
How, what's the plan? I mean, I assume you have a plan for accommodating students with disabilities who require testing accommodations? That they wouldn't necessarily be moved to this computer-based model?
So the, with the computer-based testing, it, it takes care of the accommodations, but you have your options. So if a student wants to do computer-based testing with like test read, there's the option to do the old paper tests where an adult or a teacher would read to them. There's also the option for them to have the computer actually read to them. And really, that's something that will get chosen by the student, by the parent, whatever they're more comfortable with. So both options would be things that are available. But as you get closer to testing, you're usually picking the option that you would be doing. But all, all the accommodations, all those things will still get taken care of with test read. Or I'm sorry, with computer-based testing. It might just change how we write certain things as we move forward, you know? Some students might like the computer and, the computer voice and how they can control it or slow it down or, or use it. Some people might prefer hearing their teacher or the person that they're used to reading it. It's really going to be more of an individual preference. But they'll also be able to use that type of stuff with the software we've purchased. So that's going to help the kids to make those decisions ahead of the actual test.
There's one question I had too about the Mikey Fallon presentation. I, I understand that it is really impactful and a lot of issues do get raised. I was just wondering about how that gets integrated in an ongoing basis. So I know like, one of the topics he brings up is about how boys are not encouraged to show their emotions or, you know. And, and so it seems like a really important thing that resonates with the kids because it does get a huge response from them. And then is there something that gets integrated in an ongoing way to make sure that they're?
So what we're looking for is we're looking for different people to come in to be like the secondary component to Mikey Fallon. So Mikey Fallon does the main assembly. And then it's a matter of trying to find different, different groups that might come in. And because Mikey Fallon is a little more unique, he's hitting a lot of things, not just one. So for us, it's trying to find other people to come in and now reemphasize the smaller, different pieces at different times.
Right.
For me, I want more assemblies. I want more people in our buildings. Like, I want back to normal. I want the kids to get the experiences. So we are actively trying to find different speakers that we think would play well off of Mikey Fallon and, and the message he gave. So I hope is that we'll have more this year.
I wasn't talking specifically about speakers, but like if, if something gets raised, like, like that sort of issue of just using as that example, you know, that boys are not encouraged to show their emotions and it's important that they have an outlet for that. And it seems like that is resonating with the room. And you see a lot of boys responding to that. Then is there like a way that they can kind of, in a smaller group setting or a way? Like, because I, I would feel like the default would be like just to go to guidance and talk about like, because I, it, he's very impactful and he does sort of hit on a lot of things. And you know that the kids really do respond to it. But then it's almost like.
It would typically be, you know, obviously, we make guidance available after those assemblies. And guidance does get crowded after those assemblies just because there's a lot of students who are very comfortable speaking with them. But we also, if we get information from teachers, they'll talk to us about conversations they had with their class or going to have. And is it okay? Like, I had, one of our teachers said, I hope you're okay. But when we go back, can we have an extra 10 minutes when we get back from the assembly before you change classes? I'd really like to talk to the whole class about what resonated with them, what they did. So the classroom teachers, you know, every classroom teacher is different. But you have some that are really hitting those things. And so we try to take feedback from them. And if they're telling us that there are certain students that need to be pulled out and spoken to or need some support, we try to do that. But we also try to do that with who they're comfortable with, not necessarily just a guidance counselor. So if their comfort level is, you know, the, the security guard or their comfort level is the teaching assistant, like, that's the person we try to give them the opportunity and time to talk with in that safe space.
So, so I, I consider Roundabout Middle School to be like an important junction. You have the, you know, our kids that come in from the four elementary schools into, into, into the Roundabout School. And they, they all came from different environments and they're suddenly mixed in with different classmates. You know, then, then they're gonna, you know, they're gonna miss their, who they used to go to school with because they're, they're in different classes now and all that stuff. And, 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 and. I, I guess my question is going to be more towards like, you know, do you, do you feel like there's enough of a feedback loop from the middle, from the elementary school to the high, to the middle school? And then from the middle school to the high school? Of, you know, the better prepared Roundabout to, to take in those kids?
Yeah, I mean.
And then also to hand them off to the high school?
I think transition years are really important. And, and that's why I spoke about earlier, like the orientation we did. It was outstanding this past year. But the school structure had a big, a big part to do with that. We had Wednesday where we were able to bring these students in and really devote a ton of time to them with the teachers who are about to teach them. And so connections got made on those days. And kids were comfortable coming to our school before they ever did. Like, it's nice to have all the parents come in and walk around the building with, and look at the schedule. But to have the kids there without it and to ha, watch them walk out happy and excited about what's coming was far more important. And we have to find a way to take what was really good about that orientation and figure out how we can run something like that while school's still going on, which is really. So on a normal year, we have our National Junior Honor Society kids, which are, which we still had at this orientation. But they're the ones given the tour. They're not really interacting with our actual teachers who they're going to have the following year because they're teaching. So I've got to come up with a way to free up my sixth-grade teachers to be able to meet with these students during this school year before next year. And to me, getting them comfortable and wanting to be here is a big part of it. And I'll tell you what, by the time they left that day, most of them were ready to come. Like, they saw what they were going to get to do. They, they go into the gym and they got to play. So the phys ed teachers did an activity. They ate lunch. They did building tours. They met with our National Junior Honor Society students where they could ask questions. And we rotated them in all those groups. And by the end of it, they had a well-rounded opportunity to see the middle school over about a two-and-a-half-hour period of time. It wasn't a 45-minute rush in and out before the rest of our school has to re, rego. And doing that from elementary to, to middle school and doing it from middle school to high school is extremely important. Like, those are scary transitions for kids and parents. And we have to figure out ways to make, to ease that burden. And this past year, we did. And so finding a way to do that, because I can't, I'm not saying that it's going to be easy to do it that way this year, but I need to do something in the ballpark of it.
Could we do something like a big sister, big brother type of thing? Where a student in the, in the middle school mentors a kid for a day from the elementary school and stagger a group, a group every week?
It's possible. It would just be, there's so many. I don't, I don't, I don't know how easy it would be to do it on the whole scale. I think it's great for a portion of kids because we obviously wouldn't want to necessarily partner every kid up at the middle school.
At the same time, of course.
Right. And so when you partner them up, you're also trying to put them all in classrooms. Like, you know, if we have one kid that wants to come see the building, we'll let him shadow. But when you try to do it with a mass group, you're really influxing a lot of students into, into your day, into what the teachers are doing. So I think it's a great idea. I just don't know how easy, how easy it is to pull off with, you know, 220 kids incoming. That'd be the only thing.
So it's interesting, the new clubs, you mentioned anime and games. You know, I, 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 I feel you. The Beacon Library also had an anime and game club before COVID. And I think that's kind of where the kids that were interested, that's kind of maybe where they went instead. Not to say that, that you shouldn't have those clubs here in the school. But, you know, I'm kind of thinking that there may be some competition now between the school, school district and the, and the library. Have you talked to the library about?
Well, I haven't talked to the library. Anime club came to me through one of our teachers because there's a, a number of students that were interested. And so I always tell my staff, and, and the students, the same thing. If you want a new club, you find a teacher that you think is willing to work with you. You, you write up a proposal for what your club would do and a number of students that are interested in doing it. And then it's my job to, to come to you guys to try to make that club happen for them. And so I think, you know, they can do the club in more than one spot. Like, if a kid likes anime, my guess is they would do it at the library and at the middle school because that's what they're passionate about. And so the more opportunity there is to do it, the better for them. And certainly, could we, you know, we wouldn't want to put it on the same day that the library was doing it because our goal would be that that kid can go to both spots. And so the goal wouldn't be to steal kids. And the gaming thing is something that we've been kind of researching with the tech department, which may be a little bit different from the library. And, you know, that's in, in the early stages. But that's something that today, like kids, kids game. They like to game. There is a lot of interest in it. And there's some opportunities in the local area to really make it something fun and unique and supervised for, for our students. And so I think, you know, we'll, you'll hear more about it in the upcoming months. And, you know, let's try it.
Yeah, I'm kind of, I'm kind of wondering if maybe, because what they do at the libraries, they kind of like a Wii U or whatever, and they just play the games and stuff and they have the discs.
So we can't, you know, there's a lot of licensing issues with, with what you have in the bill. So you, we can't just let them loose onto things without the license. So we have to be protected by, and the company that we're looking at that's doing this would be, that they would have that product purchased and be allowed to use that with the students. And so, while I, I agree with you, like, it'd be fun to get them all together with their stuff. I also think there's some liability issues and copyright issues with just allowing them to mass game at the school itself.
Yeah, no, I, I definitely am encouraged. I mean, gaming is becoming a new esport now.
Anthony, I, I think we're, we're going way down. We've got still the rest of our meeting to do, so.
Well, I just wanted to, I just wanted to maybe put a, an idea of maybe an animation club, but go ahead. Sorry.
No, that's great. I just didn't want to go too deep into the details of that, given that we still have the rest of our meeting. Did you have any other questions that you? Okay. Did anyone else have any questions for Brian? Thank you so much, Brian.
No problem. Thank you all very much.
Exciting things happening there. Yeah, thank you. I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual to discuss collective bargaining with Civil Service Employees Association and to seek legal advice from the school attorney, state law, attorney-client privilege. And the board will return in 45 minutes. So moved.
Second.
Flora and Anthony, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I agree with your idea of the animation club.
To zero, thank you. Are there any parent groups or student school presentations? There are none in the room? Looks like there's no one joining us online tonight either. So moving on to superintendent's report.
I'm just, I'll be very brief tonight, just a couple of quick updates. One is that for, I think, the last three weeks, about the last three or four weeks, we've had a, a pretty strict spectator reduction for athletic events. It was really just family members were allowed. Starting this week, starting today, actually, we've lifted that and we're going back to having normal-sized crowds. So part of, a couple of reasons for that. One is it was never required of us in the first place. It was really kind of a district-by-district decision. More than half of the districts in our section just kept maintaining right, normal crowd sizes, you know, during, during this latest surge in cases. We decided, felt to be better kind of on the, to be on the side of caution with this. So we did restrict crowd sizes, we feel. We've seen, you know, a decrease in our cases here in the district. Our students have always made really safe choices with mask-wearing and, and everything. So we are going to go back to having normal-sized crowds for the rest of the winter season, which I think is a great way to end the season. So just want to give a shout out to Mr. Giometta. He's done a really good job of leading, you know, the athletics department through these changes. And it's just part of the ever-evolving landscape that we are in with dealing with, with the COVID stuff. So the others, I, I really kind of said the other things in, in our little budget talk tonight. I'm really excited to start talking about things that aren't COVID, like getting our strategic planning going again, doing, getting all this input and having these conversations about the budget. We're really excited about the next few months and building a multi-year plan for the district. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Board comments? Anthony?
Good night. The committee hasn't met yet. And I don't think I have much to report. I mean, you know, been busy with COVID distribution, test, the distribution of tests and stuff like that. But nothing remarkable to report tonight.
Thank you. John?
I have nothing as well tonight.
Thank you. Alyssa?
The next meeting of the policy committee is January 31st. Is that correct?
Yes.
I wanted to ask a question tonight. There was a conversation among some parents on social media about Beacon's lack of a school newspaper. So I know that that's something that we have talked about and advocated for. So I think some of those parents are either, well, they're not watching now, but they will be watching the video at a later date. So I wanted to know if you could answer a few questions about what, what is the, what are the obstacles to having the school newspaper? And like, what would it look like for us to have one? And is there a need for community support or parent support and funding?
Right. Yeah, I would, I would love to, to have a newspaper at the high school. The, probably the biggest challenge we've had is, is having a, like a faculty sponsor of it. And, and I want to preface this by saying it's, it's, I, I don't all want to say this in a negative way towards the teachers. I, I think this has particularly been a tough year for teachers taking on new things. It's, it's been a challenging year for everybody. But that being said, we, we want to get creative and try to figure out a way to get it done. It's not a budgetary issue. We have, we have funds to, to pay for this. It's more like a kind of a faculty sponsor thing. So we, you know, we talked a little bit about this in the PR committee earlier tonight. So one of the things that we'll look into is with the high school's kind of proposed move to a nine-period day, if that allows for an elective class that's maybe, you know, focused on a school newspaper makes it easier. It's not, it's not a lot of work outside of, you know, the regular day. That could be a way to do it, partnering with some community organizations or people to do it. But we'd love to get it going too, so we'll, we'll figure it out. But it's not a, it's not a budget issue. It's more kind of like a people issue right now.
Thank you. Anthony?
The curriculum committee has not met since our last meeting. We're due to meet Thursday, January 26th at 3:30. It was originally scheduled for in-person, however, it was changed to virtual. And one of the things, just to add on to that piece, is does the high school have a journalism class? I mean, that's one way to do it, is like if there was an elective class for journalism, then they could take on that.
We talked about that earlier.
And anyway.
I'd also wondered too, just piggybacking on that is because part of the capital project is we're sort of redoing this media space. I didn't know if, if those things have become more linked now, like.
That's what I was saying. I feel like it might be really key.
Right.
To not think about the newspaper as a traditional newspaper.
Yes, yeah, but a component of, yeah. Yes, like a larger approach to media news.
Yeah, journalism, like blogging or whatever.
Yes, I mean, yes, it's part of a media literacy. Yes.
I have, I'm happy to hear that more spectators could attend the events. My kids were driving me crazy wanting to go to games and not being able to. So that will get them off the video game console, which I'm happy for.
Thank you. Kristen?
We had our facilities meeting and the minutes are included in the, in the agenda tonight. Just a broad overview is that we went through the project plan and I would describe it as exhaustive detail. And we kind of have, you know, gone up through the timeline and what needs to be done. And in addition to that, we had a parent attend who had some questions about the plan. And so I think probably the most relevant piece of information for the meeting tonight is, for anyone who's interested or watches the video, is that even though the plan is, you know, we, we have a lot of the work that's, you know, kind of going to be happening this summer is very straight-up kind of nuts and bolts work that has to be planned and materials are ordered. Some of the other enhancements to the buildings, we're still going to be meeting at a building team level to describe, you know, just flesh out more of the details and there will be a time for a little bit more input. Isn't that right, Matt?
Yep.
Thank you, everybody, for having another round of clinics for vaccinations. And there is a lot of evidence showing that these boosters are providing really strong protective immunity, which would hopefully bring things to an end sooner. So thank you so much to Matt and the community partner that's been bringing these in and all the volunteers and staff who have been working at them because it's made a huge contribution to public health. So thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, the next meeting is, the facilities meeting is February 17th. 7 p.m. Or 6, wait.
17th, yep.
6 is audit, 7 is, yes.
Thanks. Craig?
I think I reported at the last meeting, so I think I'll pass tonight.
Okay, thank you. Flora?
So we had the Public Relations Advocacy and Legislative Meeting right before this one. And we talked about the, the Legislative Lobby Day, which has been moved online unfortunately. But we are still going to have a discussion with, with our legislators. We were talking about speaking to Serino and Jacobson and talking a little bit about what we want to prioritize really raising with them. And one issue that came up was mental health services for students. And there are, there were plans in the governor's budget related to this. And it's also something that came up pretty strongly at the Laura Hudson Education Coalition meeting. It's on a lot of minds, including Serino's discussing the fact that there are issues around a lack of brick-and-mortar places and, and sort of places for students in crisis to go outside of just within, within the context of a school. And it's something that we've talked about. So on the next, the next board meeting agenda, we're gonna have a little discussion about what we want to, to say to them and how we want to frame it. And the idea being that more than saying we want money to go toward these things, here are the specific framework that we think we need in place. Like here are the five things we think we need in order to have a successful and robust healthcare, mental health service for, for students and for the school community. So something to think about before the next meeting. We also mentioned the, the free school meals, which is definitely something we've all gotten used to. That was something we had talked about in the meeting. So if there is anything else that you would like us to bring up in that call, please, please let me know. And that's it for me.
Thank you. And I have no comments. So we have no new business tonight. Moving on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board member would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
1103 and 1104.
Any others? Can I have a motion to approve 11.01 through 11.08, less 11.03 and 11.04? So moved.
Second.
Alyssa, second by Kristen. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm also in favor. Passes eight to.
I think we did get a donation, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for your.
The motion is, is on the agenda, so that should be all set.
Right, I just, I feel like we should just say thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say that for the.
Thank you for the computers.
Thank you, yes. And thank you for, for teachers for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve 11.03 and 11.04 with the amendment that the attachments show that the decisions the committees has made.
So moved. Kristen, oh, so, okay, sorry, Anthony is making the motion. Kristen is seconding it. Comments or questions?
So I understand the audit committee had made a decision. Can you recap that?
Sorry, yes, the audit committee, we heard information about the refunding, which was on, we decided to move forward and was on last agenda.
Okay. And then, Kristen, you gave a pretty thorough report on the facilities committee, but whether, which were decisions and which were not, which were.
There were no decisions made for the, I mean, would you agree with that? Anyone on the committee?
Yeah, no, it was, it was basically, we walked through the process. I'm looking at the, the outline of the, from the minutes. The architect's presentation is just, it is very, very highly detailed oriented, detail-oriented. And I think, you know, partly because of the project lead that we have and that's our nature, but also because the last time, we really didn't have a lot of detail read in, so they've been really thorough. And then we talked about, you know, going back out to the committee, the building level, to committees to explain what's going on. There's also this design review process that I think you remember from last time. The plans have to be submitted. There's a certain timeframe. They have to be approved. Then we go into bidding. We looked at renderings of what we should expect things to look like, which was really helpful. And if anybody, you know, I think we should be putting those up online. Because it does give you a sense of like, even though these seem like, like the hallways seem kind of like, it's not gonna make a huge difference, but then when you do, like you even heard Brian talking about before, reducing crowding, bringing in more light, you know, altercations go down and it improves the environment in the building. So those things were talked about. And then there was a final discussion with a parent who had sent an email to the committee about the turf, the proposed turf being used on the south playground. And, and what the decision-making process was a part of that and what the materials. And it was a really interesting discussion about materials. That's gonna move back down to the building level when these things really get fleshed out. So that's it. There was no decisions. It was really just.
You know, and that's, and that's great that you did all that work. I mean, you're just not taking any credit for it by not putting it in the minutes.
Well, I mean, the minutes would be, if we were gonna go into that detail, the minutes would be 15 minutes long, which is not, those aren't minutes in my mind. Those, that's like a detailed account of what happened, so.
The thing about the minute, like what we could do is Zoom does allow you to do machine-generated. There could actually be like actual.
Transcripts.
Transcripts of meetings, but they, they're machine-generated, so there's, I use them all the time for work. There's a lot of errors. Somebody would have to go in and correct the errors. The person who corrects the errors would need to be attending the meeting. So we either are paying somebody to attend a meeting and take detailed notes. Everyone who's present in the meeting is usually involved in the discussion. I don't know if we're putting, if we're recording them, the meetings and putting them online.
We're not recording committee meetings.
No.
Yeah.
I think we are.
It's not really, I mean, if you would prefer, I could do a much more detailed readout at the, at this meeting so that they get included in our minutes. But these are really, these overviews are just so that everybody has an understanding of the topics that were covered, so that that's being captured.
Well, I think our PowerPoints could be included on the website and that, and that really did cover it. There were just a lot of words around it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, the PowerPoint would give you the very, it, it, yeah. There's no reason to have minutes of that presentation. That is like.
All right, I'm satisfied. I just, you know, I think decisions are, are something important to, in the minutes. So I mean, but I mean, if, I mean, if a readout here, it doesn't get captured in, in our board minutes, you know, anyway, so. But I mean.
But you feel like there's like a decision that's because of what we talked about at the.
Well, I mean, like the one, the one parent comment, you know, was it decided to not do anything with it or to do something with it, I guess.
It really, there was no decision about it. There's no.
Oh, there wasn't?
No, it was really about like that it would go to, that.
He elaborated on the process a little bit more, that basically the, the, the school community part has not been brought back into the design process yet. And so her concerns were not, there, no final decision had been made about it.
It also has to do with a concept, like a misconception of, of turf. Like, and basically the same thing we went through the last time, which is just that people think of it as like astroturf. It's really, it's not that. So it was, the parent comment was really about having this understanding of turf. We were able to have like a, a bit of a richer discussion about all the different things. But that, that's going to be shared with the public and on a building level when they go into the more detailed design process. It's almost like having that discussion now is sort of pointless without that building community being brought in.
Okay.
I'd like to add one thought. Sometimes I know in audit and finance and other committees, we tend to operate more by a consensus on a lot of things rather than the formal votes. I don't think we've had a single formal vote in either the, any of the committees that I've been on, but, and no great controversies either. So, for example, in the last audit meeting, we had quickly been apprised of this opportunity for the refunding, the refinancing of some old bonds. That came up because our financial consultant saw the opportunity, notified Anne-Marie Corderoni and the administration, and they brought it to our attention and we jumped on it and thought, yeah, it's all pros and no cons. So we all nodded, yeah, let's go with it. So I guess that was a decision. We didn't really think of it as a formal decision.
Exactly. I mean, I think.
Sort of passed the ball back to the whole board and go for it, you know?
Right, which is why I mentioned it in the minutes as of having happened, but did not put it as, you know, a decision. But I will, I'll keep that in mind in the future.
Yeah.
I don't even know if that, did that require board approval or was just we were made aware of this opportunity?
The refund, well, it was on, we voted on the agenda.
Oh, that's right.
Our last meeting was formally.
I wasn't here.
But so the entire board was made aware of it. Craig gave a really, you know, thorough explanation at the last.
Sorry. I should have watched it.
That's okay. Oh, that's okay.
Greg, missed your shiny moment. Yeah, I think that at the committee level, my experience of that is just that these things are brought up and then the tires get kind of kicked for what might our questions be or what might some, some things that we would need more clarity. And then that helps shape what they bring to the board for actual decisions.
Mm-hmm, definitely.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I am in favor. Passes seven to one. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Anthony, Kristen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor. Passes eight to zero. Have a good night, everyone.